All right, I'd like to call the regular village board meeting to order and we'll start by saying a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, our clerk, please call the roll.
Marevka.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
March.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Ham.
Here.
Bowden.
Here.
Included in your packet were the minutes from the July 22nd, 2019 meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion.
Okay. Been moved by trustee Parker, seconded by trustee Jones.
Parker?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Marevka?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Also in your packet are the accounts payable and payroll. The payroll, the pay period ending 7/27/19, is worth $51,397.07. Accounts payable, general fund of $50,292.05, and also in the general fund, $615.52, and the motor fuel tax fund of $19,071.11, for a grand total of $69,978.68. Are there any questions or comments on the bills? If not, entertain a motion to pay the bills.
Why should we pay the bills?
Second.
Been moved by trustee Ham, seconded by trustee Marevka.
Ham?
Yes.
Marevka?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
All right, any public comment or questions?
My name is Barb Simak, I'm behalf of Peatone Park District. We are doing an event this weekend in the park. The Chamber is going to be doing the music at the park on Saturday evening. There's a kickball tournament that's maybe Saturday during the day. On Sunday, we're doing our second annual Dog Day Afternoon. So you might have seen some flyers going up. I've got flyers for you as well. It's noon to 12:00. We have different vendors there. We've got a yoga with your dog class going to be taking place. Will County Kenon Unit is participating again. Talk with Chief Mort, Fire Department will be there as well. It's a really good event. We had probably over 400 people there last year for our first time, and we're hoping that everybody, especially the park or the village board, will help us out as well and come on out and see what the park's doing.
Good luck. Thank you. Any other comment? Jim, did you want to say something?
Sure. Jim Bolado of Aqua, just kind of follow up from last meeting. It was a special meeting, I just thought I'd maybe reiterate what we kind of discussed last week is we have to take extra cautionary measures. We're going to hold off on bringing the new water source out there. We're ready to go. The permits are, or, I'm sorry, permits are applied for, but it's under design. It's our, the easements have all been acquired, so starting construction is easy to do. So just to take, make sure that we have the treatment process perfect. We change our procedures and policies and we're just going to make sure every T is crossed, every I is dotted. So we'll put that off. I guess the good news for Peatone is that means their bills will stay the same. They're not going to increase because the contract is that we can't bring them up to our consolidated rates, which are the same rates as everybody else in the region until the water source is there or after January 1st. So I'm not sure the exact delay. We're having people look at it, scientists and chemists, to make sure that this is definitely done the right way. So, any further questions on the pipeline there?
Based on where you're at, when would you suggest that we might have Aqua water?
Best guess, maybe middle of next year. So maybe a year from now, if everything goes well. As more time goes by, I'll obviously get a little closer. There's a huge incentive for us to make sure it gets done financially especially, but we're just not going to do it until we know for sure 100% that this is going to be, we're not going to have the issues we have up north.
So, just to reiterate, so this isn't going to affect the water going under 57, 257, right?
That is correct. We'll use the same source that we have today.
And then, it's not going to affect the water main project on Corning that we, you know, we kind of put off doing that street until next year because you guys said you were going to do a major, you know, that project there?
Yeah, it won't affect any of the projects that we have. The only thing that's going to change is actually changing of the water source.
Okay. Any other questions for Jim?
And then, the billing change, since we don't hit that calendar date, is it when the valve turns? How is that handled, once we do have water?
Yeah, once the, once the source actually physically changes.
Okay.
So...
Like on the quarter, maybe, or however?
Yeah, it's a good question, trustee Ham. I'm not sure, we'll, when you get to that point, like I say, if it's mid-bill, like if it's a midterm between bill or something like that, I guess we'll see where we're at with the construction and figure it out from there. For ease, it would almost make sense to try to do it on a building cycle, but we'll see what were the constructions at and go from there.
Okay, thank you. Good question. Thanks, thanks for coming. Any other questions or comments from the public? Okay, and we'll move on to reports of committees, officials and staff. Village administrator report?
I'll just point out that the Eastern Will County mayors and administrators held a legislative reception, invited all of our legislators together in one group over in Mooney, and as a collective group, we just wanted to have them together and give us an update. We put together a series of questions for them. And we had a pretty good turnout. If we didn't have the actual senator or representative there, they sent a representative. It was, it was very informative and very helpful. So, you know, we try to do that, and we'll try to go forward and do that on a regular basis, and you'll see that I've reached out to some of Peatone's representatives on an individual basis, and I'll continue to do that. So I'll do that through our associations to get Peatone's issues out there through, like Will County Governmental League or South Suburban Mayors and Managers Association. I'll do that to legislators directly, and you'll see some of the meetings that I attend there. And so you're aware that we're putting our issues out there to try to, you know, affect enterprise zones if we can, if we can possibly, you know, get those, gaming bill, get our issues in front of those for that, and try to make sure we have our transportation issues for groups like that. And then we want to get information back about what's going on with the legislature in July. We had no committee meetings in July. Some months are bispering others. For economic development, we've been pretty busy, as you can see, and there are some businesses locating, so I'm pretty excited about that and will hear about some of those a little bit later. And I just want the public to know, as well as all of you, we've got an open door policy. If you have any questions, if the public has any questions on any of these projects that are occurring, or any businesses or anything that you see, please feel free to come and talk to me, ask me questions, like if you want details, maybe more than you can hear, or if you have any ideas or if you want to talk about these, please reach out to me.
Can you comment on the former Mexican restaurant?
Sure.
Quick overview of what's going on out there?
Sure. I mean, we don't, I don't know much more than what's in my report, but we have an investor that's closing on the building in very short order, in the next week, and they haven't closed already. And they've just reached out to the village and they want ideas about, to work together with the village, and ideas about what is a good fit for that location. They're talking about food, something, maybe like a restaurant or some good food there. So they've been doing some small upgrades, fixing it up a little bit here and there, but we should hopefully see something there soon, sooner than later, we hope, but that's, somebody has purchased it.
Caleb, Caleb, is I saying that right? Caleb Chemical?
Right.
Tell me about that.
So that is, they're just a small entrepreneur facility who does some like shampoos and body wash type chemicals that they distribute only. And they're not fully in the building, they're going to renovate, they purchased the building, they're going to renovate it. So I've been working closely with the prior chief and trying to make sure they're safe and sound in there. So they'll, you'll get more information from them, working with them, until they fully renovate the facility and Occupy will get you a business registration and get them in here in front of you or to look. But I just wanted to kind of give you a flavor of more kind of the activity that's happening here within the businesses.
Good.
It's called Caleb.
I don't know what building.
Oh, over on Tucker Road, on the very corner of Tucker and...
Draxler.
Correct.
Cool. Any other questions? You might with Representative Parker, is there anything significant there?
Um, no, not really. I just reached out for just a meet and greet and to maybe get some assistance on the gaming bill. And so, yeah, I just, but she's been very supportive and she helped secure that grant with the sidewalk, so we always want to say thank you and maybe...
I'm glad we're talking to her.
See if that could continue in the future, but yes, so...
Good. All right, moving on. Chief is here, there's no police chief report. Public Works report? Mr. Hinkie's here?
Yep. Just a couple things here, updates. I know I've had some questions about the Route 50 project. August 19th is the i-dot deadline. We're supposed to pave a surface coat Wednesday and Thursday, and stripe it Friday. They have a little bit of landscaping to do, so it's going, depending on the weather, so...
When you say it's a deadline, I mean, what happens? They get a penalty or what happens?
I couldn't answer that question, Peter. From what I was told, 19th is the deadline. That's the day that, you know, we're supposed to light up, so...
Sounds good.
The local street project should start tomorrow, depending on the weather. Obviously doing East Corning first, then moving into town. And the Public Works building project has begun. We're looking at roughly a month and a half, two-month project, so everything's going, so...
I know we kind of put off planting trees till fall, I mean, we still plant it up on there?
That's the plan, depending on what's in the budget, because after that storm ahead, I do do some removals.
Right.
And I'll touch base with Marcy and see what's...
Okay. On the parkway trees, do you want residents pruning those, or are you guys going to do that, or what's your...
If they, if they know how to prune them, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
If they have questions, I'm more than welcome to give them some pro on it.
But if there is a parkway tree that's like hanging over the street or hanging over sidewalk, can we just let you guys know if you guys go out there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey Bob, on the roads, on East Crawford, and I noticed there's one over by the new construction on Conrad, I believe it is, there's huge chunks of the road taken out and there's gravel pits in there. Do we fix that, or?
That is, I believe, an Aqua.
Oh, is that...
They're aware.
Do we have gas yet at the building?
That is coming soon, from what I was told today from Judy from Metacor. She's just waiting to release the project.
Okay.
So it's in her book, just a matter of getting, you know, getting it released, so...
Think we'll have it for the winter?
Oh, we should.
Yeah.
I believe so. I'm hoping.
Good.
So, that's what I got. Any questions?
Thanks, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
All right, engineer report, Troy?
After public works report, I have nothing to report.
No questions for Troy?
Same.
And then, code enforcement officer report was included in your packet, if there's any questions on that. If not, move on to old business, which there is none. New business ordinances, first ordinance is approving letter of engagement for engaging an independent registered municipal advisor. And if you want to explain that, or...
Sure, I definitely will, and Steve Kline's still here with the EDG group, so he can also assist with this one because we're recommending him as, his group as the municipal advisor, so... And this is just really for planning purposes for the village. This would just be to engage the EDG group to provide the village with facts, figures, and advice on possible structure, timing, terms, and other matters concerning the potential issuance of municipal securities such as bonds, bank loans, or other types of debt obligations that the village may wish to consider. So in order for the EDG group to do that, we need to put them on record as our municipal advisor, which is them, and they are registered with the SEC, and what was the other term? See, the...
Municipal Securities Rulemaking Board.
There you go.
So...
And it's just for planning purposes, if we were to need to, you know, look at any kind of capital, you know, issues for, if planning, capital planning, you know, we haven't had a capital plan in probably, you know, six years. What does it look like if we wanted to buy that sweeper truck with a loan instead of doing the lease purchase? You know, we could, you know, ask for some, you know, advice.
So as I understand, that we are just engaging them, if we need to have any kind of advice, we've got him there.
Right.
We're not saying we're going to pay any certain amount to engage...
There's no additional fee. No.
And, and just as, I'm not aware that we are going to be, you know, we're not looking to float a bond, or...
No, we've known.
Kind of, we don't have any need to incur debt at this point, but just to have him there as an advisor because of the rules from the SEC and such?
Right.
We've got to formally engage you and even ask you a question?
At this point, it's more for our benefit than it is yours because in years past, we've provided performant projections for TIF revenue to cities, and they, and villages, and they sometimes will say, well, there's some unobligated or uncommitted portions of our increment that we might want to leverage into some type of even a three-year loan, or it could be a longer-term loan or a bond. And we would run those numbers for you just as well as we do for any TIF projections. When the recession occurred in 2009, and the Dodd-Frank Act occurred, they changed the banking laws so that anyone who provides that type of information has to be registered with the Securities Exchange Commission as well as this MSRB, the Municipal Rulemaking Board, which we have registered. But we can't provide you any projections or any type of analysis that would infer or imply that you were going to take on any kind of debt without you having engaged us as a registered municipal advisor. I can't legally provide you that kind of information. So we offer this service to our existing TIF and BDD clients as an additional service at no cost to you, and the only time that there may be a cost in the future would be if you decided that you were going to issue some type of debt obligation and you needed to rely on our opinion for that specific transaction, we would have a separate engagement letter for that at that time. So the other benefit to the, to the village is that if you have other, which I don't think you have much debt, but if, sometimes municipalities will have other bonds or debts that are out there already that have been issued, they may be approached by underwriters or others who will try to provide you with ways that you can reduce your costs or save interest, and they'll present proposals to you. Some municipalities are not as comfortable as others with evaluating those types of proposals. Municipal advisor is available to try to help you kind of sort through the details on those so you can compare one proposal against another. So it just kind of keeps everybody open and honest about what's being presented. That was the idea behind the law when we changed it, so...
Okay, any questions from the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve a letter of engagement for engaging an independent registered municipal advisor, and so it'd be ordinance 19-25.
Motion.
Third and second. It's been moved by trustee Marevka, seconded by trustee Jones.
Marevka?
Yes.
Jones?
Yep.
March?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
All right, next on the agenda is ordinance approving request for fence variance to 341 West Wood Street. This is the one that we discussed in our last meeting and came up with, we were going to, where is, we were going to allow, 11 feet off of the sidewalk. So any questions on that at all? If not, I'll entertain a motion, and so it'd be ordinance 19-26. It's a vote.
Stop it.
Been moved by trustee Bowden, seconded by trustee Marevka, to approve request for fence variance 341 West Wood Street.
Bowden?
Yes.
Marevka?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
All right, next item is ordinance amending title 15, Chapter 157(c) of the Code of Peatone. This is a text amendment in the B3 zoning district to allow light fabrication as a special use. So this pertains to the new business that we go out near 57 Viaduct and talked with them last meeting about, they do some light fabrication in the business, and we really didn't allow that in the B3 zoning district, so this will create a text amendment to allow that as a special use. Questions? If not, entertain a motion, this'll be 19-27. It's been moved by trustee Ham, seconded by trustee Jones.
Ham?
Yes.
Jones?
Yep.
Parker?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Correct.
And next is ordinance granting a special use for light fabrication business with distribution of the finished product when determined to have minimal impact with respect to noise, traffic, and environment at the location 1201 Teal Road and Peatone. So this is actually granting the special use, last ordinance we created the special use, this one, we're granting the special use to the specific business. Questions? Not entertain a motion to approve the special use?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Been moved by trustee Parker, seconded by trustee Ham.
Parker?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Marevka?
Yes.
Jones?
Yep.
And that was ordinance 19-28. All right, next there is a resolution. Resolution, the village of Peatone proposed Peatone Tax Increment District 2 Public Redevelopment Project to incur TIF eligible project costs. And Mr. Klein, you want to comment on that?
So as you heard earlier at the public hearing, you have already approved, in May, you approved an indecent resolution for the private project, for the Travel Plaza project. And the indecent resolution in that case was for the private costs that could be incurred that later you may want to use TIF dollars to reimburse some portion of those. This resolution tonight is to provide public notice that you may be incurring public project costs perhaps before the TIF district is established. I don't know that you will be, but because you annexed the property last week, you are closer now to moving forward with that project, and before you would purchase the land and close on any costs regarding that, we would recommend you have this indecent resolution in place so that we can be sure and come back and count those costs later and you can reimburse yourselves. That's basically what this is for.
Okay. Questions from the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve a resolution, this'll be 19-R07.
Motion.
Second. Moved by trustee Jones, seconded by trustee Bowden.
Jones?
Yep.
Bowden?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Marevka?
Yes.
And March?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Klein, thank you. Okay, moving on, business registrations. Number one, Viaduct, is that I'm saying that right? Viaduct, Susan Palmer, at 1201 Teal Road, which we've been talking about, they're going to be occupying the warehouse building out on Teal Road, and we just need to approve their application for business registration. Any questions? If not, entertain a motion to approve their business registration.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Been moved by trustee Marevka, seconded by trustee Ham.
Marevka?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And next we have another business registration for Great Lakes Lifting Solutions LLC at 209 East Corning Avenue, and the business owner is Billy Brooks. Is he here today, or?
He's not. I apologize for not being your...
Name your name.
I'm Cindy Scripter. I work with him.
Okay.
And, but I lived in Peatone for 20 years, and my husband's from Peatone, so I'm like, I'll go. I'm actually excited that they're coming here. I didn't bring enough folders, so I apologize. Basically, Peatone, that building is going to be their corporate office.
Thank you.
So they, they specialize in spider cranes, which are small cranes. We have them like on cruise ships and everything else. And then we also started doing SmartLifts, which are glass manipulators. And the SmartLifts, we are the only distribution company in the United States except for Washington. So to call Peatone their home hub, we also have corporate, like, sales offices in Florida, Texas, New York, and Arizona. But, you know, like, Peatone would be their main line. So they basically need, which is perfect for this building because it has the two buildings, so one building would be for the spider cranes and the other one would be for the SmartLifts. That's it.
So basically, you're a distributor for the lifting company?
Yes. Yeah, we do sales and service.
Will there be any outside storage?
Uh, no. Like, we'll probably have, like, their trucks, but all their trucks are like full-size Chevy trucks, but most of the guys take them home anyway, so, or there might be a Sprinter parked in the driveway, but there's, you know, plenty of driveway parking and everything else, so they would be off the road and everything.
Jack, are you going to have crates of spider crane sitting outside?
No, we actually, no, because when we got a delivery, like, when we get deliveries in, they go right into the showroom, we have a forklift, take them all out, put them in there, and they're stored.
Cool.
So there's nothing outside or, you know, anything else.
Is that driveway completely paved?
I think it is. I know Don, he had, I'm sorry, his name's Billy, his full name's Billy, but everybody calls him Don. Don actually had the code enforcer right after they closed to find out, like, what needs to be updated in that building, because it is an older building, and what can he do, you know, to improve it, like, he knows he wants to get it repainted and new windows to make it look more presentable.
So this is where Jerry Baker used to be? No, where's 209 East Corning?
The lifting was over here on...
Oh, oh, sorry, oh, yeah, okay. You're going to decide?
I think if we do, it's just going to be one small... I think if we do, it's just going to be one small one. They actually have two businesses, and I work with the second business, which is Midwest Sign and Lighting, and they've been in business for 24 years, and they're a union, 134 union sign shop. So, but basically, they do installs and service also, and I'm the permit manager, so I would be the one filling out a permit, but I know it's not going to be that illuminated, you know, probably just a small box sign, just so, like, if we do get deliveries, they know where to go. There won't be anything extravagant.
So, you know you got to get a permit to...
Oh, yeah, 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 not until I have to get the business license.
Right.
But I know we can paint.
Okay.
Because I...
Any other questions? How many employees?
Well, in this office, there's probably going to be no more than eight, because a lot of our service guys from Chicago work from home, or they're always out traveling. You know, like, we don't really count the ones that are in Florida, you know, New York, because they never come in. Sometimes they'll fly in, but at that main office, you'll have probably seven to eight, you know, where, so I've been telling them, like, okay, when you guys move, this is great meal for lunch, here's breakfast, you know, and I already talked to Greg and Dave, I'm like, no, they buy all their trucks from Phillips. You need to go down there and introduce, because they buy a truck once a year. So, I'm already spreading their word.
Okay.
Trying to get the end business.
Being a distributor, do you sell to dealers, or you sell directly to the end user?
We basically sell to both. It's mostly to, like, what, since it's construction, I guess we, you know, we never, that's hard to say. We sell to some dealers, but most of them are in, like, on the construction sites, so, like, if they have a big glazier business, you know, that company might buy five machines. We're just starting to do rentals, so with the rentals, that might go to distributors, you know, where they'll say, okay, I'll buy 10 machines, and they'll rent them out. But a lot of them is just basically construction, you know...
Contractors.
Yeah, contractors.
So, they would be an end user, so we should participate in some sales tax, shouldn't we? With the sale of these machines?
Possibly, yeah.
I would think so.
Yeah.
What's your average volume?
For the crane part, I'm not sure. I know for the smart lifts, it's gotten pretty high, where, when they were talking to the investors, like, right now, because it's just, like, right now, this is our second year for smart lifts, and it's close to a million-dollar company already, and they're hoping that in five years, it's going to be 25 million.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, we're hoping for that growth. That's why I was excited that, when you look on the website, it'll have Peatone. You might know that it's employees eight.
I'll say Peatone.
Yeah.
Any other questions? If not, entertain a motion to approve a business registration license for Great Lakes Lift Solutions. So, move.
Second.
Moved by trustee Bowden, second by trustee Morevka.
Bowden?
Yes.
Morevka?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Item D is hiring part-time police officer Andre Robu, Robu, you know, R-O-B-U, with starting date of service 8/13/19. So, I believe we talked with chief about this person last meeting, so I don't know if there's any questions on it at all. The guy from Tinley, right? Yeah. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve that hiring.
Motion.
Second. Moved by trustee Ham, second by trustee Jones.
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Morevka?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
All right. And item E is Knights of Columbus request permission for their annual Intellectual Disabilities Fund Drive at various locations, September 20th through the 22nd. Is anybody from the Knights of Columbus?
No, I never come.
Okay. So, we got a letter in the, in your packet describing them. Usually, they sell their tootsie rolls throughout the area. Any questions on that at all? Not motion to approve permission for them to sell?
Motion.
Second. Second. Been moved by trustee Morevka, second by trustee Park.
Morevka?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Questions to the press? Our correspondence communications or petitions. School's starting, so make sure you obey all traffic laws around the school bus, and keep our kids safe. And county fair is coming next week to Peatone too, so there'll be a little more traffic in town, so be aware and enjoy. Anything else? Not entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second. Moved by trustee Jones, second by trustee Morevka.
Jones?
Yep.
Morevka?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm just staring right at him, and I can't hit his man.
Yeah, no worries.